Welcome to the Town of Acton, Maine Selectmen's Meeting for November 13th, 2018. First item is salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay.
Can we say that for a minute? I can look at mine.
Approval of the agenda?
I make a motion that we approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All for a vote, all in favor, all opposed. Minutes of approval of the minutes of the last meeting?
Make a motion, we approve the minutes of the last meeting, which was November 7th.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded to approve November 7th's meeting minutes, any discussion? All for a vote, all in favor, all opposed. Okay. And Department Heads of Committee Chair Updates.
Good evening now, just to bring you up to date on a few things here. Old business on District 2N. Tree work has been started on the New Bridge Road with Abbott Hill. Hopefully he'll get those done tomorrow and then move on to the Hopper Road. We'll get those trees cleaned up before some mid-weather comes along possibly on Friday. Hopper Road, we shimmed them, those three cross stitches last Thursday, got those taken care of, and then we also went over to the New Bridge Road with a culvert is and we shimmed that area in there. So, we put out a total of eight ton, six on the Hopper Road and two over there. So, that'll, it's cold, but we've got it and so we should be, we should be good for the winter until the Hopper Road is in real good shape. Those will be good, we were able to tack all that and heat the hot top, what needs to be done. So, last week I brought up my concerns with the roof that's leaking at the Blue Town Garage, the Two Bay Garage. I got some calls out to some contractors, I'll follow up on that stuff there. Like I've said before, just with the weather, everybody's, everybody's behind. So, see what we can do, at least we've got it on the list and on the agenda to follow through on that stuff there. So, a couple of new things for some new business. I've got a culvert on the intersection of County Road and Milton Mills Road that's plugged. We have worked it, we do have some water going through. Put a call into Neston Sons out of Kennybunk who has a rotting truck, that's the application we use in the cities. Jeff, the owner's gonna call me in the morning, hopefully we can get him up there, we can get that, get that unplugged. It's too late in the year. Hot Top Plant's probably gonna be closed now, you know, try to do that and with so much water in the road. So, if we can unplug that culvert and get us through, through till springtime and then address that one and a couple other ones. So, as of right now, that road is, we've shut the road down. I'll let Jennifer put that on our Facebook page. If not, we're gonna just be chasing black ice onto the Milton Mills Road. There's about four inches of water running across on the south side of the road coming out of the field. So, we just shut it off, off that little crossroad, we've coned it off, we barricaded, taped it off and got signs up. So, we're good on that. And my last thing, as of tonight, we've got approximately 2,000 plus or minus yards of sand put up in the, in the sand shed. So, probably one more good day. Thank you all to Rudy Pepin, he stepped up. Scott's been having some problems with his loader, so Rudy Pepin, we contacted him, so he's brought his big loader down, he's been working that the last couple days and they've gone hard and done a real good job. So, hopefully by tomorrow, we should be done or maybe, maybe a little bit more the next day, but we're right on track where we should be. And that's it. So, okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Yep.
I'm just wondering where we are with the guardrail at Roe Bridge, the one that needed to be, it was damaged. I wasn't sure who was-
That's the first I've heard of that.
Where the ball was on that. Oh, okay.
Yep.
So, does anybody remember where the ball is on that?
Well, Mr. Mooney had started with it.
Right.
You know, with this, and I feel like it had gotten ordered, but I guess we need to call him-
Okay.
-to see, and, and so I think that's where we were at.
We'll, we'll figure it out.
Okay.
Thank you, I just didn't know if you had the ball or not.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think we, I, yeah, I don't think we passed it to him.
That's kinda what I thought.
I think, yeah, I think you're right on that.
There's been so much that we needed to do.
Yep. Any other Department Heads or Committee Chair Updates? Anyone at all? Okay, we'll hold up just a couple of minutes while Jennifer figures, there's a quick paperwork thing she didn't, didn't do, so. So, no fleet.
There's no-
No. No. That would, that would still be public comment, so, thank you. Thank you for asking though.
There's no announcements listed either.
No.
I think the tree lighting's a Saturday though, right? No, next Saturday.
Exactly. I just-
That was giving me a heart attack. We haven't even cut a tree yet.
He finished talking before I got back, 'cause I wasn't expecting that.
He did.
Just got done.
He did.
Dennis wanted to, Dennis wanted to get up and talk though.
But you wouldn't let him?
No.
Sorry about that.
He had to wait till public comment.
Okay. So, that was our only Department Head update, right?
That was it. Yep, that was it. So, on to old business, generated bids?
So, making some headway with this. The proposal and the $8,800 that the town approved, the fine print in here and certainly it wasn't, something never came across, it didn't come across my desk, but nevertheless, it doesn't include any of the propane connections or digging or laying the line or anything. The $8,800 was for the installation of the 20-kilowatt standby generator and the 200-amp service at the automated transfer switch, so I'm trying to get some prices for that piece of it from our, from the current company that we have. So, we've gotten some bids on the generator and they seem to be in that same area. Like the electrician explained to Kim and I today, it's basically going to, it'll cover the envelope, if you will, of the building.
Right.
It's not gonna, you're not gonna be able to run everything off of it. The primary, the primary goal was the fire and rescue tower receiver, right? Whatever's down there.
Government channel.
Government channel, okay. So-
Power, I mean, heat.
And heat, yeah.
Yep.
And he said, as long as you weren't trying to use the stove or using, you know, other rods and ends.
Right.
So, I've sent an email to Michelle to see if we can take that out of building maintenance where it was a line item. We may or may not be able to, so, let you know if that's gonna be a summer project or if we're gonna be able to move forward with it.
Okay. ACO position?
So, last week you made the statement, if anybody's interested in the animal control position and they, and it's all about money, come to you. So, I reached out to a couple of people that were borderline possibly being interested and asked them if that played a part in it. And it's a $432 a month for the 24/7 stipend, so that did play a part in it. So, with your approval, we will add an increase to the special town meeting that needs to happen and see if we can get anybody based on that. But, you know, the calls continue to come in every day for that position as far as the need, people that need the ACO.
Okay. Town reports?
I'd say it's about 75% done. I spent mostly yesterday working on it, I expect to have a draft to you by the end of the week.
Okay. And the dozer, I'm still working on, so, can move on from that one. Okay.
Can you read my chicken scratch?
No.
So, I took 13th straight off the agenda-
Right.
-and I didn't know if you wanted to announce why, so that at least so the gentleman weren't looking for it.
Yep. Yep, we did give Bill a little bit of an update earlier.
Okay.
You've been handling this all the way through.
Uh, well, kinda.
I'll tell him what you said.
I just, I just, we got a verbal update that it looks like things are progressing, so we're letting the Code Enforcement Office continue to do their job because things have changed on the, on the property, so-
I think the bigger issue is that someone's filed an appeal through the zoning board, through the zoning board. So, now that the town becomes one of the parties in the said case, so-
We can't comment on it.
The board really shouldn't be talking about it and continuing to look into it if someone is questioning the process. So, at this point, it's waiting for zoning board of appeals. They are having an informational meeting on Thursday, we're gonna be swearing in the new members and the, Joe Lenkowski will be coming to discuss the process with the new members and then they will accept the application and move forward with setting a date to review the application. So, the town slash code enforcement is one of the two parties, so the board shouldn't be discussing it or hearing any more of it now that we've received a application to appeal Ken's decision.
Yep. Good. Okay, new business, we are at this time, do I hear a motion to go into executive session pursuant to MRSA 405, Section 6, dot A. This would be personnel issues, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Make a motion to go into executive session pursuant to MRSA 405, Section 6, dot A.
I'll second that motion.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, all opposed. Okay, we will be back out after our session, it shouldn't take too long, go through the rest of the meeting.
Ready? Should we try that again? I make a motion to come out of executive session.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, all opposed. Okay. Okay, ZBA appointments.
So, that should actually say ZBA and Warrant and Finance.
Okay.
I didn't add her in, but, so Susan Meehan has served on the Warrant and Finance as an alternate in the past, we've had that position open for some time, so I reached out to her and asked her if she would be willing to continue to serve and she thankfully said yes, so we've got an appointment for her for the remainder of the term, so she's replacing Carol, no, not Carol, I'm sorry, she's replacing Lois. Thank you. Lois who moved up to Dr. Williams' resignation, so it's the same expiration.
Okay.
So, that's the first one. And then zoning board, this is based on your decisions last week. We have Robert Anderson and Dennis Long III as the actual members and Brandy Senical and Ryan Gleason as the alternates.
Okay. So, let's do warrant and finance first, 'cause that's all by its lonesome. Okay, we have two, Susan Meehan, the Selectmen of the Municipality of Acton do in accordance with the provisions of the laws of the state of Maine hereby appoint you as Warrant and Finance Committee alternate member within and for the Municipality of Acton until June 30th, 2020, given under our hand this 13th day of November, 2018. Do you hear motion?
I make a motion to appoint Susan Meehan as the Warrant and Finance Committee alternate member until June 30th of 2020.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor, all opposed. Okay, any objection to doing, grouping these together?
No.
Okay. Let's do the regular members first and then we'll do the alternates. So, we have two, Dennis Long III and two, Robert Anderson, the Selectmen of the Municipality of Acton do in accordance with the provisions, the laws of the state of Maine hereby appoint you as zoning board, zoning board of appeals member within and for the Municipality of Acton until June 30th, 2021 on both of these, given under our hand this 13th day of November, 2018. Do you hear motion?
Make a motion to appoint Dennis Long III and Robert Anderson as zoning board of appeals members until June 30th of 2021.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor, all opposed. Okay, two, Ryan Gleason and two, Brandy Senical, the Selectmen of the Municipality of Acton do in accordance with the provisions of the laws of the state of Maine hereby appoint you as zoning board of appeals alternate members within and for the Municipality of Acton until June 30th, 2021, given under our hand this 13th day of November, 2018.
I make a motion to appoint Ryan Gleason and Brandy Senical to the zoning board of appeals as alternates until June 30th of 2021.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor, all opposed.
So, as you're signing those, that now gives us a full board. We had Lois Mischu, Roland Waterhouse and Dan Archibald were still current, so, five members, two alternates, full committee, and like I said, they'll be meeting on Thursday for an informational.
Special town meeting warrant.
Okay, so we've been working on this, so it is scheduled for Monday, November 26th, was the soonest that we could do it legally. Monday, November 26th at 7:00 in the evening, Article 1 is to choose a moderator, Article 2 is to see if the town will appropriate $6,995.36 from undesignated fund for the incurred expenses related to improving flat ground road that exceeded the original appropriation. So, those are the bills that we got in after the fact that still have not been paid because out of that $20,000, there's only about $100 left. Article 2, to see if the town will vote to appropriate from undesignated fund an additional amount not to exceed $9,000 for the completion of improvement of flat ground road. This was the number that Mr. Mooney originally gave you and speaking to Mr. Langley today, he felt like between eight and nine was a pretty accurate number, so we put not to exceed, so hopefully they don't spend that amount, but that's to finish it. And then to see if the town will vote to appropriate from undesignated fund $3,047.94 for public safety, which is the animal control that we talked about earlier, changing the stipend from 432, double the amount.
Okay. So, that lays out all the items in the article. I think with that, we don't need to be reading all this, correct?
No, you can just make a motion to sign it and-
Yep, you've laid out all, everything that's on it.
I spoke to Roland during the break and asked him to convene his committee as soon as he could to get some recommendations.
That'd be great. Sure. Okay, what is your wishes?
I make a motion to sign the warrant for the special town meeting on November 26th.
Yes.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor, all opposed.
So, Mr. Waterhouse, the warrant actually has to be posted by November 19th, I realize today is the 13th, so we will probably post it without recommendations and they can be added and the moderator can read them that evening unless you feel like you can convene before then, but we have to legally have it posted.
It's the 19th?
Next Monday.
I think it's going to be a meeting Friday.
Okay.
This Friday.
Let me know so I can get it filmed and advertised.
Okay. Okay, item D, local option municipal, election in a municipality.
So, end of October, 22nd to be exact, I got a letter from the Bureau of Alcohol, Beverages and Lottery Operations State of Maine saying that they hadn't received records indicating that we had notified them of the local option for certain permissions. What that really means is that they wanted proof that the Town of Acton had voted to allow alcohol to be consumed and sold on Sundays. And when I first got it and my ties to Shapley, I thought, it must be, they must have sent it to the wrong town because Shapley just voted on liquor and I thought, well, Acton, I mean, as far as I know, has always allowed it. Well, they sent it to the right town, what they were looking for was some sort of proof that the town meeting voted on that. So, we went back through our records and in 1982, we found the warrant article that asked the voters of Acton to allow the selling and consumption of spirits and liquor six days a week. So, we went back through the records from 82 to current several times, can't find anything that says that, that we have done that. So, the good news is, I guess for this, is that the state is not looking to shut down these establishments or stop it immediately, but they would like us to act on it. And I thought, well, we're having a special town meeting, maybe we can put it on, it's not quite that easy. There are state laws that follow how this procedure has to happen and it's by petition only. So, the Selectmen can't add a warrant article asking for permission to sell and consume on Sundays, it has to be done by, by petition. So, it says a petition for a local option election must be signed by a number of voters equal to 15% of the number of votes cast in the last gubernatorial election. The statute goes on to tell you exactly what the question needs to be and then, of course, it would need to pass at a town meeting. If it doesn't, then the state would step in. So, unless somebody out there has some knowledge that, you know, that maybe we missed, we went through the minutes several times, but I can't find anything that you voted on it. So, looking for somebody that wants to step forward, assuming that's the wishes of the town, to start said petition and get it to a town meeting where the voters can decide if they want to allow consumption and sale of alcohol on Sundays.
Does a special town meeting work on that as well, or does that have to go to the town meeting?
No, it can, a special town meeting because it says in here that the petition must be addressed to and received by the municipal officers a minimum of 40 days, 45 days before holding a special municipal election.
Okay.
So, the municipal officers actually only have 45 days to act on it. I did tell them that our annual town meeting was in June and asked if that would be too far out and that was going to be the extent of their extension, if you will. So, maybe the school, I mean, it would be nice to not have to have a special meeting-
Right.
And they're, and like I said, they're not knocking on the doors saying that you need to stop now, but we're, we're under the radar, but she did tell me that out of the 500 municipalities, there were numerous ones that, that couldn't show proof of this vote. So, anybody's interested to take that on, I've got some paperwork and steps.
That goes back to 83.
82 was the vote, yeah.
82, wow.
Looks like June 8th of 1982, so they would've had to vote after that for Sundays.
Yep. Okay. Interesting.
So, what you're saying, somebody has to come forward and start a petition?
Yes.
Yep. Yes, sir.
To-
Allow.
Allow it.
To allow.
How many stages do it?
So, it's 15% of the last gubernatorial and I think we were at, what, 16, 70? So, you figure 160, I mean, you're looking at 200, 225, I'd have to get you an exact number.
Yeah. It shouldn't be too difficult to do, but it's-
Somebody has to do it.
Somebody has to do it, yeah. And leave it to the state to finally catch up with it since 83.
And the thing about-
Down at the dock.
Yeah. The thing about this one, Mr. Meehan, is that the, it's very, it's laid out very clear.
We'll do it.
Okay, it's laid out very clear, the steps, so it shouldn't be a hard process.
Yep.
It might be too sad.
That's so funny.
Yeah.
Just never-
Okay. Okay, moving on here, security of the sand salt shed.
I asked to have this put on based on last night's road committee meeting. We'd like to see, and certainly we can wait till the second road commissioner's in position, but something, some policy procedure based on doors and lights and gates down there, possibly cameras, so we can, we can table it.
Okay, so, once the, once we have a second person in place, do you, does the road committee, do they have ideas on the policy or is it something you want me to get the suggestions from the two guys and then-
I don't think they had any.
Do you, you guys have ideas, we can draft something?
We can-
I guess, what, what do you want the policy to say? Just kinda give me an idea.
When you leave the building, shut the light off, close the door, lock it and let, you know, close the gate and lock it.
Just basic.
So that, you know, the public can't access the buildings and then possibly hurt themselves.
Because you can still get to the little shed to get sand.
Yep, you can still get to the little shed for sand.
Yeah. You may wanna talk about, talk to the road commissioners though about it, if they're in and out.
A lot.
A lot loading during a storm.
Right.
You know, they may-
Yeah, but I mean, I would assume we would-
So-
Sit down with them to develop the policy.
Okay. So, we'll schedule something with them and we'll start talking about it more.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Dave, you wanna let Dave talk on this?
Sure.
Yeah, come on up, Dave.
Yes, this was also brought to my attention, myself and Scott Mooney talked about it. Somebody was in the salt shed, from what I was told, and I guess, the way I look at it, is if they're not on the town payroll or they're not an elected official, they shouldn't be in there to begin with.
Right.
Somebody went in to see how much salt was already in the shed. They had no business being in the shed because of the liability of the town is involved in. The reason why it was open is that that was when we were having salt delivered through Granite State. Those guys are hauling from, they haul around the clock.
Right.
So, for them to stop, lock the gate, close the door, 'cause the trucks are just, you know, coming and coming and coming. The, the place is locked up, the lights are on, myself and Scott did talk, we are gonna, you know, get some signage made up and everything and as soon as we're done putting sand up, the gate's gonna be pulled shut and locked and, and everything there. And you're right, Mr. Waters, when, when it's storming out, we don't have time to be opening, closing the gate and, and things like that, but when we're done, things are secured up and, and everything there.
Just make sure before you put any signs up that the board sees them first and-
Yes, yes.
Signs being employees only or-
Something like that.
And we can order them through.
Yes, and if you check with, with Maine Municipal, they will spell it out to you whatever the wording has to be legal-wise, so it'll cover us under, under liability law, so.
So, once we appoint a road commissioner, we're gonna have to sit down and have a workshop anyway, so we'll make sure that gets the top of the list.
Sounds good.
So, yeah, we're on to it and everything, so just declare things.
Sounds good.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Lakeside Drive.
Oh, that's Article, Article 43.
Article 43, Lakeside Drive.
I printed off the applications, you all have them. My understanding is the road committee made a recommendation last night, so looking for the board if they're interested in making a recommendation or motion. So, this is one of two of the applications that have come in, right? The agreement was the cap was gonna be at $3,000.
Yes.
The road committee agreed that it was, the application was complete and that they had the receipts, everything that they wanted has been provided.
Mm-hmm.
So, really, it's just a matter of the board authorizing the money to be reimbursed.
And some road committee members went down to check out the work and it was-
They did a real good job on that road.
Yep.
And all the work that was done was in accordance with?
Article 43.
It complies with, yep.
Yeah.
Yes. Thinking from the, the follow-up side of that, is there anything in there that talks about reimbursement, who the reimbursement is going to, I mean, for the auditing purposes? So, they've already paid these expenses out, right?
Right, so go to the road association.
To the association director.
Yeah, the, the association name listed on the application.
Yep. So, if you decide to approve it, if you can just all sign one copy, we'll get that to the treasurer and-
Yeah, as long as it meets, meets the criteria, I'm, I'm happy with it. And I guess we did agree to go with $3,000, so.
Yeah.
You ready for a motion?
I am.
Yep.
Everything looks good.
I make a motion to approve, I'm not sure how to word this, the application for Lakes, Lakeside Drive Road Association for the Article 43 regarding 23 MRSA Section 3106, up, up to $3,000.
For $3,000.
For $3,000, sorry.
Okay. I'll second that.
Okay, is there any-
So, if I rip this last page off, that's, or do, does she wanna have the whole thing?
We'll put the whole, yeah, we'll put the whole application in with the auditor, along with the warrant article.
This is what you'd want here.
Okay.
We like to give them more paperwork than less.
Yes. Okay, it's moved and seconded to approve the application for Lakeside Drive, Lakeside Drive Road Association to be reimbursed for the work that was done on their road. She went to Article 43, this will be the first one that we've, this one we've done.
Yeah.
So, okay, it's $3,000 is the dollar amount to be paid to Lakeside Drive Association.[1787.23] It's $3,000 is the dollar amount to be paid to Lakeside Drive Association. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All in favor? All opposed? Okay.
I'll sign mine.
Okay. Item G, District 2 Road Commissioner. We need to extend one to start with. I should know, I should be able to read this rather than looking at it. This one says, "To David Langley. The selectmen of the municipality of Acton do in accordance with the provisions of the laws of the state of Maine hereby appoint you as District 2 interim road commissioner within and for the municipality Acton until November 30th, 2018. Given under our hands this 13th day of November, 2018." Originally, he was appointed until the 18th, was it? Okay. Extending it until the 30th. Do we hear a motion?
I make a motion to appoint David Langley as the District 2 interim road commissioner until November 30th of 2018.
I'll second that.
Moved to seconded. Any discussion? Call for a vote. All in favor? Okay. And now, we need the next one.
Want to review the process and thank all of them?
Review the process and thank all the men.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, here's where we sit with the appointment of a new road commissioner. We did advertise it. We had several applicants. We reviewed the applicants. We interviewed all the applicants. We did a quick re-interview tonight. We thank all that put in for it. There were, wasn't a, wasn't a super easy decision to make, but we did make one. So, that should pretty much cover the foreground. And tonight, we have a, we're going to appoint the new District 2 road commissioner. So, with that, this goes to Joseph Laterno. The selectmen of the municipality of Acton do in accordance with the provisions of the laws of the state of Maine hereby appoint you as District 2 road commissioner effective December 1, 2018, within and for the municipality of Acton until June 30th, 2021. Given under our hand this 13th day of November, 2018. Do we hear a motion?
I make a motion to appoint Joseph Laterno to District 2 road commissioner until June 30th, 2021.
I'll second that.
Moved to seconded. Any discussion? Call for a vote. All in favor? All opposed? Okay. At this time, I'd like to introduce Joe, if anybody doesn't know him. This is Joe Laterno. I don't know if you've got anything you want to say.
How you doing? For those that don't know me, I'm Joe Laterno. I am an Acton resident. I appreciate all the support and I look forward to serving the town.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Okay. We didn't have anything else to put on there, did we, that we missed? We took care of all the little things that we had. Okay. Couple things. This time, I will open it up to public comment. Anyone from the public? Nope. Not seeing anyone. You have executive session down here at 7:00, but we don't need that.
Yeah. You know.
Oh, we do have one.
I'd like, Joseph Pruma, I'd like to ask, Mr. Walsh, what is the status of the town-owned property, the D6 that's on the Wunschel property right now?
Still sitting there at the moment. I'm talking to the folks at the fairgrounds to see if we can put up a building down there and, which we'd have to, of course, vote on to do something with. I don't see any real problem with where it sits at the moment.
Does it operate?
I don't know. I don't know, I don't know how it got there. I know how it got there. I know they moved it up there, but I don't know whether they started it or how they, how it was moved out of the town building. And that was done five years ago, eight years ago?
Shouldn't somebody look at it? Shouldn't it be appraised? It's town property.
It could be appraised. I mean, it's a piece of, you know, it's an old bulldozer, right? Old iron like that.
Many years ago, that was used.
Oh, yeah.
In severe storms by the road commissioners and the people working for the town, the old road commissioner regime. So, it's part of the town.
Oh, yeah.
Just like this town hall is.
And that's why I'd like to see a spot down at the fairgrounds for it, to be there and be on display during the fair and fired up and maybe not moved, but, you know.
Well, I think it should be appraised, the value of it. Parts are valuable. And I'm questioning.
I do, I do believe when they moved it up there, they did fire it up and move it up on a flatbed.
Well, they had to.
They had to. It's about, other than a big expense with a big flatbed, there's no other way of doing it. So, yeah. It has a lot of historical value to the town and it needs to stay as part of the town.
When Mr. Wunschel left us, what about the town radios that were in the trucks?
They've all been turned into the town hall.
What about the town Sanders?
Town Sanders is down at the town shed.
All of them?
He only had one. We only owned two.
What about the granite that was taken out of the culverts on New Dam Road?
Can't tell you about that.
Granite out of the?
Has all the equipment from the town owns from District 2 been returned to the?
As far as we know.
Everything has. You have an inventory.
Well, we have the radios. I know the Sanders is down at the town shed.
And the keys.
And the keys.
All of this, we've gotten.
That's all you've gotten? Because there is more than that.
Do we have a list somewhere? Because?
I know, for example, the town owns a front-runner rake for doing camp roads. Where that is, that's a very expensive piece of equipment.
Front-runner rake? What else?
What is that like? Is that a?
Take one top in front of the truck?
York rake for the front of a truck?
It's a York rake that goes on the front of the truck. We used it for years for, Bernadette used it. Scott Mooney used it. They've used it to maintain the dirt roads in the summer rather than spending the money for grader. They graded stuff twice a year and during the summer, they did use that just to maintain them. And it's a very expensive equipment in the town for a few years now. Nobody's used it, which I really don't understand because it's a lot cheaper than grading. And, I mean, a dirt road is kind of late now, but I don't believe any of the dirt roads were graded this year. And the culverts weren't cleaned this year. So, there's a lot of stuff that has to be done.
Yep.
And prolonging this as long as we have is a lot to ask out of anybody. And what's there been the decision? I haven't heard a decision on whether or not you guys put it out to bid for the snowplowing two ways. I believe one by the hour, a lot of current thing, and one by the mile. And I haven't heard a decision on how the board's moving forward.
We didn't go that route.
No.
So, by appointing the road commissioner, he's expected to pick up all the plowing, all the same duties of the District 2. They chose not to go by the per mile.
Okay. But that wasn't said at a public meeting, that that's what you were going to do?
I think we did a couple.
Well, no. I think that's part of your decision tonight. You just, you did make it clear.
Yeah. I probably didn't make that clear.
While appointing this road commissioner tonight, he is to pick up all the District 2 duties, including all the plowing.
The way, the way it has.
Okay. I just.
We had one applicant for the per mile and we didn't go with that.
Yeah. Only one.
How much was that?
It ended up being 4,500 a mile?
Correct. But it didn't include.
It didn't include, didn't include any workman's comp or any payroll taxes or anything like that. And that's not what we were looking for. We were looking for a company to come in and give us a quote on plowing District 2's roads.
Right.
So, technically, we did not get.
Not with town employees.
Right. Technically, we did not get the proper bid spec. So, yep.
So, we're spending last year approximately $7,000 a mile.
Whatever it costs to have a road plowed.
That's what I'm saying.
District 1 or District 2?
That's the cost. Last year. Thank you.
Okay.
Just one thing, if I can, Mr. Walsh, to road committee and to Elise, I did speak to the contractor that has the south side in Shapley, who I was talking to during the break, in regards to the piece on Lebanon Road. I don't think that he would have a concern about extending and plowing that small piece. We did some measuring today and it was only about 4,000 mile, 4,000 feet. So, it's less than a mile. So, we probably could come up with a financial figure for the agreement, but the concern was, what are we going to do about material? Because there's no way he's dropping Shapley's sand.
Right.
On that piece of, on that piece of Lebanon Road. So, even if he agreed to it, that was his first question. Who's going to treat it? So.
Well, buy the sand from them. It's a lot cheaper than us driving over.
There's just, there's no way to, there's no way to, there's no way to gauge how much material he would need on that piece of the road, is what he's saying. Just something for you guys to continue talking about, but that was his initial first responses.
Yep.
So, something to think about and continue.
Yeah. Think about it maybe for the future. I mean, I think we're, we're getting real close this year on time and weather and whatnot. So, yeah. I mean, we think about it, maybe, maybe District 2 here can run over and treat it after it's been plowed. I don't know.
Well, if he's going to do that, then he might as well just plow it himself.
Yeah.
Exactly.